Good evening, everyone. I like to call the Flint Board of Education Board Committee of the whole meeting to order. It is now six thirty-one P M. Board members, as I call your name, please reply present for the public record. Vice President Perry.
Present.
Secretary Green won't be present this evening. Treasurer McIntyre.
Present.
Assistant Secretary Treasurer McNeil.
Present.
Board Trustee Walker.
Present.
Board Trustee Wright. Board Trustee Wright. And myself, President McIntosh, board members absent, Secretary Green and Board Trustee Wright. At this time, we'd like to hear any comments from the public. The public is reminded that they may raise their hands to speak or submit comments in the chat section. Also, anyone who sent in an email prior to today's meeting will have that read. Members of the public are reminded that the Board of Education by its bylaws thirteen seventy are not obligated to answer questions, make statements or comments in response to issues raised by the public. In general, such issues will be referred to by the Superintendent for Investigation, Study or Recommendation. At this time, Stephen, I will ask if anyone has raised their hand, submitted a comment or email. Stephen will state your name before you are unmuted to speak. Please restate your name, address before you begin speaking. It may take him a moment, so please be patient. Stephen? Do we have Stephen tonight? Does anybody?
I'm here. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
I do have one email. All right, and this email is from Lynn Herand. Flint Board of Education members should be thrilled that there is interest by the Harvard Group to purchase Flint Central High School and Whittier Junior High for development probably into mixed use housing and commercial space. Imagine the impact on the library and cultural center, Mont College U M Flint, East Village Neighborhood. Unfortunately, current and past Flint Community School Boards have not had the resources to properly secure Central or Whittier or the vision of its potential. Stop bickering, sell the buildings and let's move on before they are beyond repair.
Thank you.
I currently have no more in the chat. The questions and there are no hands raised at this time.
Okay. The public is reminded that you may submit your comments by email to FBOE@flintschools.org to have them read at the next meeting. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. McIntosh, I do have a hand raised now.
Okay.
For some reason, it's not showing up like it normally does. And this is from, this is Keyshawn Wade. Now go ahead and unmute Mr. Wade and feel free to unmute yourself and you may begin when you're ready.
Hello?
Yes, sir.
Huh?
Oh, you're okay. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name's Keyshawn Wade, thirty-three seventy-three Kent Street. I'm a alumni of Flint Southwestern and I think it was the eighth that I saw this letter from Superintendent Stewart about bringing up the conversation about reopening the schools and in-person, having the option for in-person learning. And I want to say that like the past week's decision to not go back to in-person learning was the correct one. And that decision, regardless of what five forces, we must make the decisions to do what's right for us because in the past, the decisions that we have been forced to make as a district have been ones that have crippled the district. You know, from history, we learned that we're always faced with the dilemma of what decision to make and what decision not to make. And what is popular or what other people are doing is not the decision that we need to make. We need to understand that our reality and our conscious as a district cannot be determined by anybody else but ourselves. And our ability to come up with the correct decision about whether or not we return to in-person learning shouldn't be based on anything but the health and the safety of our students and our families in this city and in this district. The possibility of putting children and the teachers that are pillars of our community in harm's way is offensive. And offering in-person learning with only temperature checks is exactly that unsafe, it's irresponsible, it's outright dangerous. We have had a year to come to know what asymptomatic means and know that forty to fifty percent of people who actually have the means to get tested for COVID are asymptomatic and show no symptoms. And that a symptom of COVID includes fever and heightened temperature. So if we're doing temperature checks, they would be ineffective because they wouldn't show that you have COVID. I just really want to know what, what will it take as a district for us not to consider this option? Like, will it actually take the deaths of our students and their families? Like, will it take us being responsible for that to understand that we shouldn't do this? Will it take teachers dying? Will it take us losing our teachers? Like, what will it take? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else, Stephen?
Yes, ma'am. I do have another here.
Okay.
Claudia Perkins Milton. I'll go ahead and unmute her. And you may begin whenever you're ready.
Okay, Claudia Perkins Milton, twenty-six-ten Stevenson Street, Flint, Michigan. I too am concerned about the schools opening back up. I wonder about the health and safety of, of the students as well as the, the teachers. I wonder if all of the questions that were, the last meeting that I heard, there were some questions that were not answered from teachers and parents, if they had been addressed. I also wonder about the, if there's a filtration system, is the water fountain working? Do they have shields up? I mean, this is a, we're trying to get out of a community outbreak. And so I'm very concerned with the schools starting back up. All those things really need to be addressed. And I hope and pray that you've considered that really tough before, you know, you decide to open up the schools.
Thank you.
Sorry, there was one more thing. Yeah, air filters. That was it.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else, Stephen?
Let me get one more look. I do have another. Claire McClinton. I will unmute some Clinton. And you may unmute yourself and begin when you are ready.
Okay, I sent an email in, but evidently you didn't get it. So I'll go ahead and do a verbal. I'm concerned about the recent approval by Judge Levy on the Flint Water settlement that's been in the news and everything lately, the six hundred million dollars from the state of Michigan and more from other defendants. What's not being talked about very much is the fact that two percent of that six hundred million is earmarked for special ed needs of children and youth in our community that was impacted by the Flint Water crises. Now, that comes out to nine million plus dollars. And this is a good thing that this was settled so that our young people and children can get the services that they need. But there is two problems with this situation. And number one is that the Genesee Intermediate School District is playing a, what I view as an outsized role in how the money is going to be distributed. And they do not have a good track record as it relates to Flint Community Schools and Flint Children as far as distribution of money. That's a big concern. And then the other concern that I have is that the Genesee Health Systems, who do the neuropsychology testing, is backed up for months and months and months. And so I would, I'm asking the board to look into that part of the settlement because that is directly affecting Flint resident children and youth. And we need to make sure that the proper programs is in place, that the, the parties have the proper testing that they need so that they can get the services. Now, we've had a lot of money come into this city in the name of the Flint Water crises and the community and those that was affected never see any of the money or the services that should be delivered. So I really want the board to pay attention to this. There's just been a temporary agreement to the settlement. But the judge will be making her final approval probably sometime in July. And I'm urging the board to get on top of this money before she makes her final approval so that this, which is a wonderful event that we're getting the money. But if, if our children don't see it and all the impacted children do not get, take, are able to take advantage, then it'll just be another waste of money. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
If you would, ma'am, could you state your name and address for me one more time?
Claire McClinton, one-two-nine West Jameson Street, Flint.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I believe that is it for the comments at this time.
The public is reminded that you may submit your comments by email to FBOE@flintschools.org to have them read at the next meeting. Thank you. At this time, I seek a motion and a second to go into closed session to meet with union representatives, with union representation regarding determination to proceed with ten-year charges.
Some move.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded. We will meet in closed session, board members. It is, is there any?
Okay, thank you. We have to vote. We have to vote.
Oh, it's backwards. Okay, I'm sorry. At this time, I'll take a roll call vote to determine if we will go into closed session to discuss ten-year terminate, ten-year determination. Vice President Perry.
Yes.
Treasurer McIntyre. Treasurer McIntyre, I think you're muted.
Apologies, yes.
Assistant Secretary Treasurer McNeil.
Yes.
Trustee Walker.
Yes.
Trustee Wright.
Yes.
Myself, it's a yes. Is there any discussion? Board members, we are now in closed session. You must, you must close and go to webinar into the private Zoom meeting through the invite that was emailed from Monica Elston. Public members, we will retire after we come out of closed session. Thank you.
My webcam is freezing. Can people see me?
I can hear, but I can't see anybody.
Okay, there.
All right, looks like we coming again. Ms. Wright? Ms. McNeil?
I'm here, but I don't see anybody, but I'm here.
Okay, we're going right away from this, right? Give her a second and then we'll get rolling.
I'm here.
Okay, I didn't, you were muted, I guess. Okay. It sounds like we have everybody here. I would like to call the Board Committee of a whole meeting back order. I will conduct a roll call vote to ensure all board members have returned. Board members, as I call your name, please say present for the record. Vice President Perry.
Present.
Treasurer McIntyre.
Present.
Assistant Secretary Treasurer McNeil.
Present.
Trustee Walker.
Present.
Trustee Wright.
Present.
And myself, present. So we all made it back. I now turn the floor over to trustee Wright for the Human Resources Committee of the whole meeting.
At this time, I would like to call the Human Resources Committee of the whole meeting to order. Mrs. Rubin will present action items to the board.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Okay, thank you. I'll make sure you can hear me. Human Resource Committee Action Items. I seek a motion and second to move action item one point three Personnel Recommendations to the Regular Board Meeting on March seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one for adoption.
Some move.
Board.
It has been properly moved and second to move action item one point three Personnel Recommendations to the Regular Board Meeting. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Ms. McIntyre?
I see here that one of the resignations is an individual who made public comments in the last committee of the whole meeting. And I'm wondering if, I know this has been something that's been brought up before, but when we look at resignations of doing exit interviews to seeing, you know, possibly what, what we could do to improve retention of, of staff and, and teachers. And I'm, I'm just hoping that there wasn't any sort of retaliation or feelings or perceived feelings of retaliation for speaking out in the, in the meeting. I would really hope that that's not the case. And, and I would just want to like reach out to this individual and ascertain whether or not, you know, there's anything that we can do as a board just to make this a better situation.
Ms. Rubin, isn't it standard prax, practice to conduct exit interviews if employees are willing to do so?
Yes, it is. And employees generally give the reason why they're resigning when they do. And the resignations in the board packet at this time were presented well before board comments.
Okay. Wait, so we have, I, I'm confused. What do we have from the resignation? We have.
They, they resigned before they made comments before this board. So their resignations had nothing to do with what was going on in the board or any type of retaliation, I think you spoke.
Okay, that's. Appreciate that. Thank you for the clarification.
No problem.
Are there any other questions? Okay, seeing none, the motion to move action item one point through to, to the regular board meeting for adoption will be conducted by a roll call vote. As I call your name, please say yes or no to approve. Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Mrs. Green? Mrs. McIntyre?
Yes.
Ms. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mrs. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Walker? And myself, Diana Wright, yes. So the motion is approved, six yes and one absent board member.
Thank you.
Ms. Rubin?
I seek a motion to move in second to move action item one point four Determination to Proceed Upon Tenure Charges to the Regular Board Meeting, March seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one for adoption.
Some move.
Okay.
It has been properly moved and second to move action item one point four Determination to Proceed with Tenure Charges to the Regular Board Meeting. Is there any discussion?
Excuse me. And before we have, I fail to inform the board, you cannot speak on that openly, her personal information, the person's personal information as it pertains to their records or any type of situations concerning what has went on with them for legal reasons. I am sorry and I take full responsibility for that, but if you have questions concerning this, I ask that you move cautiously. Sorry. Thank you, Ms. Wright.
That's okay, Ms. McIntosh.
Ms. Wright.
I think we were, okay, Mr. Walker, we were at that point for discussion.
All right, I just have a procedural question. So at our next board meeting, given Ms. McIntosh's comments, is item one point four, will that also come up in a closed-door session as well? Like we just got out of, or is this a public? Will that be, will item four be a pub, a public piece? Just wanting clarification around that.
Ms. McIntosh, were you getting ready to answer or I will just say what I think?
Yeah, go ahead, because I think too, there's no guarantee here.
Okay, well, actually, the part we did in closed session, what, let me restart over. What we're doing now with the action item is the only thing we do in open session. We don't discuss any of the closed-session information in public because that's, that's, you know, that's protecting her right to privacy to some extent.
Thank you, thank you.
And, you know, we're not supposed to discuss anything that happens in closed session outside of that meeting with anyone, so. Are there any other questions or comments regarding action item one point four? Okay, seeing none, the motion to move action item one point four Determination to Proceed with Tenure Charges to the Regular Board on March seventeenth for adoption will be conducted by a roll call vote. Ms. Mc, Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Mrs., oh, Mrs. Green, is she here? Not yet.
No.
Mrs. McIntyre?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mrs. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
And Diana Wright, yes. The motion passes. Six with one absent. Okay, Mrs. Rubin?
I seek a motion and second to move action item one point five Notice of Consideration for Nonrenewal of Administrator's Employment Contracts to the Regular Board Meeting on March seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one for adoption.
So move.
Support.
It has been moved, oops. It has been moved and properly second. Is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Mrs. McIntosh?
And I'm not sure if it's even appropriate, so, Ms. Georgina, you let me know if I'm not proper. But how many notices for nonrenewal have you given out? Is this just one instance? I'm sorry, I didn't. Because I know we spoke of one situation, so I'm just trying to figure out, is that included? Is that?
Board President, this is the notice of consideration for nonrenewal of administrator contract. This is every administrator in the district receives a ninety-day notice of consideration. So all administrators, including the exec team outside of the superintendent and including myself, have received this notice.
Right, I'm, I'm with you now. I'm with you now. I'm up to speed now. I'm sorry.
No problem.
Are there any other questions? Okay, seeing none. The, the vote is on the motion to move action item one point five Notice of Consideration for Nonrenewal of Administrator's Employment Contracts to the Regular Board Meeting on March seventeenth for adoption. This will be conducted by a roll call vote. As I call your name, please reply yes or no to approve. Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntyre?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
We have a lot of Max, so.
Yes.
Mrs. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
And Diana Wright, yes. So the vote passes with six present and one absent person, so. Thank you, Mrs. Rubin. Seeing no further action, I'm seeing no further action, I declare the Human Resources Committee of the whole meeting adjourned. And I now turn the floor over to Mrs. Perry for the Governance Committee of the whole.
I would like to call the Governance Committee of the whole meeting to order. I will now call upon Mr. Jones to present action item five point one to the board.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I seek a motion and a second to approve action item five point one First Reading of Amended Board Bylaw Sections eleven hundred through district elections, eleven fifteen, acceptance of office, eleven fifty-two, election of officers and length of term, eleven seventy, board position vacancies, eleven eighty, board committees and represent, representatives, thirteen hundred, meetings, thirteen twenty, agenda, thirteen sixty minutes, and moves all amended board bylaw sections for a second reading and adoption at the regular board meeting on March seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one.
I need a, a, a motion and a second, please.
Almost.
It's been moved and second, any discussion?
Ms. Trustee Perry, I did have one. And I was reading, reading it in section thirteen twenty on page thirty-two. There was an organization listed as priority children. That organization has now changed to Voices for Children, so just wanted to note that correction.
You know what? You're right, and I meant to get that change. Yes, Voices to Children, right?
Voices for Children, yes, ma'am.
For children, yeah. Okay, I'll make that happen. Thank you.
Did I, Mr. Walker?
And that was what, I'm sorry, Mr. Walker, where was that? What section? Where was it?
Thirteen twenty, page thirty-two.
Page thirty-two. Okay, honey, thank you.
No problem, no problem.
Any further questions? Seeing none. Where am I? Oh. The motion to approve action item five point one to the regular meeting for a second reading and adoption will be conducted The motion to approve action item five point one to the regular meeting for a second reading and adoption will be conducted by a roll call vote. As I call your name, please reply yes or no to approve. Uh, Mrs. McNeil?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntyre?
Yes.
Mrs. McIntosh?
Yes.
Mrs. Diana Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Adrian Walker?
Yes.
And myself, Vera Perry, yes. Motion passes six, uh, well, six and one absence, so I would, I, I'm just gonna say six zero. Um, thank you, Mr. Jones. Seeing no further action, I declare the Governance Committee of the whole meeting adjourned. I now turn the floor over to Treasurer McIntyre for the Finance and Operations Committee of the whole portion of the agenda.
Excuse me, may I say something right quick?
Uh huh.
Um, who, whoever has the agenda up on the screen, can you move it up so, because we've had some of these, and I'd like to see the bottom of the agenda. So I can follow along, so I won't have to do so much flipping.
So, as that's happening, okay, I would like to call the Finance and Operations Committee of the whole meeting to order. I will now call upon Mrs. Dumprey to present information to the board.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We had our Finance and Operations Committee of the whole meeting last week, and I presented EDEP scenarios. There were some concerns about the scenarios that were presented, and the board members asked that we take some um. Other considerations before we present scenarios. So I took that information from the board members and had a conversation with Treasury. And Treasury has um been willing to allow us to have an opportunity to do a program study. And to try and do some of the other studies that we requested for facilities assessments and enrollment assessments. So that we can have more concrete information to put into our scenarios before we present them to the board. So I wanted to share with you all that I heard your concerns, and that I reached out to Treasury, and that they're willing to pay for this program study. To help us to gather this information for us to be able to make informed and sound decisions. Do you have any other questions or concerns?
Awesome. Great job.
Okay. So I just wanted to share that information with you this evening, so that you would know that we will not be voting on those um scenarios until we get some more information, and I can present different scenarios at that time.
Good job, Mrs. Dumprey.
Well done. Is there a timeline? I don't have a timeline yet, as I receive more information, I will get back to you and let you know.
Ms., Ms. Dumprey, I, if, Ms. McIntyre, if you don't mind, I also have one more question. Um, so what does this do to the March seventeenth uh timeline that we had discussed previously?
So what I discussed with Treasury, because we needed additional information, they have moved our timeline. I don't have a date yet, because we're trying to get the information, and we don't know how long it's gonna take to get the program studies, any facility assessments and enrollment studies done. And so we're collaborating together to determine what that timeline is gonna look like. And again, once I have additional information, I will willingly share that with the board.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That is all the information I have to share at this time.
You're muted, Laura. Laura, you muted.
Sorry. I was asking if any board members had any additional que, questions for Ms. Dumprey at this time? Uh, with permission, I do have, I do have one question, uh. Ms. Dumprey, is there anything that uh you would like from the board to help assist you with this process moving forward?
Once I find out um what is gonna be required for this program and study, and once I find out more information, I can touch base with you at that time, and let you know if there's additional assistance I can use from the board.
Just let us know, please, that's, well done, thank you so much for doing this.
You're welcome.
So any additional questions at this time from anybody else? Thank you, Mrs. Dumprey.
Welcome.
Seeing no further business, I declare the Finance and Operations Committee of the whole meeting adjourned. I now turn the floor over to President McIntosh for the Board Committee of the whole portion of the agenda.
At this time, I will call upon Assistant Superintendent Jones to present action, at, action to the board.
Um, Stephen, can you pull up the PowerPoint presentation? So I'll, I'll give uh the, I'll go through the slide first, and then I will s- uh, seek approval for the action item. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So Stephen, you can go ahead and go forward. So um, we, we are proposing uh that we return um our self-contained classrooms, our most vulnerable populations. Uh, pre-K through third grade in our ECDD classrooms. Uh, we are planning to uh ask your approval to return those scholars March fifteenth. Uh, we are planning, as we did before, a hybrid start. Uh, Monday and Tuesday will be A through L. Thursday and Friday will be M through Z of last names of scholars. Also, there's different cohorts, uh, because A through L in some schools is a large amount of scholars. So what some schools have done is decided to put households together. Ensure that we have the right amount of scholars on each uh, during each uh Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, Friday. Uh, no face-to-face classes on Wednesday, uh, March fifteenth. Uh, that should say fifteenth instead of fifteenth-second, looks like. All self-contained classrooms, ECDD, pre-K through third, and they all have sneeze guards. All of the sneeze guards are now in the district. Uh, and then March twenty-second, the following Monday, we plan to bring back all fourth through twelfth-grade scholars. I seek your approval uh to move action item twenty-one point seventeen, authorization to return to school to the special meeting tonight, March tenth, twenty twenty-one for adoption. All of those scholars as well uh that decided to stay uh in our distance learning, uh, will continue to do that.
So moved.
Second.
It has been. It has been moved and properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yep.
Who was that to say yes?
Laura McIntyre.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Laura.
I, I heard saying that sneeze guards are in the district, that's what was reported last time. Um, and that was one of my concerns, was that they were in the district, but they weren't installed. And I'm getting, frankly, a little bit tired of this bantering about with language. I just would, I want it made plain and clear. Are the sneeze guards, all of them installed? Because they were in district last time. I don't care if they're in the district, are they in place and ready to go?
All sneeze guards for those scholars that will be returning Monday are installed. The rest of the sneeze guards for fourth through twelfth will be installed uh next week. Um, Mr. Chapman, uh, please speak to um and comment about the sneeze guards that are in place.
That is correct, sir. All the sneeze guards are installed in all the elementary buildings. Every classroom that you spoke of, they're all installed.
That's, I, I, I'm getting reports to the contrary. Um, and, and again, I, I really dislike this playing around with language, um, with sneeze guards being installed to all students who will be returning on Monday. I, why aren't, if they're in the district, why aren't they installed? And like they were promised to be back when we, we're trying to get the schools opened earlier. This is, this is exactly my concern, they're in district, but they're not installed. It's, and it's, some of them are, some of them aren't. And there's just a lot of confusion, and I am still getting reports from teachers and staff who are actually in the buildings that those, that they aren't. So I, I don't know what to, what to believe.
So Board Member McIntyre, the, so returning Monday, uh, the reason, one of the reasons why we have a slow start. Meaning that we're only returning uh pre-K through third grade and also our most vulnerable. Uh, is to ensure uh the, that the sneeze guards that for those scholars were in and placed in classrooms. Um, the, we out, we do have all of the other sneeze guards that we ordered in the district, and they are being installed. But those scholars will not be in until next Monday, but they will be installed before next Monday for fourth through twelfth grade. I want to say also, secondary will not have sneeze guards installed, they will be taking them to their classes. So they will be mobile with those scholars. So you, you're going to see classrooms that will not have one installed on the desk permanently. Because our secondary, that seventh and eighth through twelfth grade, will be taking them around to classes.
Um, part of my information, are you done, Ms. McIntyre?
No.
Oh, okay.
But. So, uh, were, were they left in the classrooms for, for teachers to install themselves, or were they installed?
Excuse me, you talking about the sneeze guards that we've installed?
And, and the sneeze guards, honestly, the sneeze guards is just a, is just one small consideration. Uh, it's, I, I don't want it to sound like I'm harping on the sneeze guards, because that's just one consideration that, that I'm worried about. There's, there's, I, I, I just don't feel that we're being straightforward with. The information that we need to feel confident in, in reopening these schools, even within a hybrid model. I'm really concerned, and, and from this, from the comments from the public, I feel the public is concerned as well. And, and I just would like to get some semblance of. Honesty, I guess, I, I just, I don't, this is not a reassuring conversation to me.
Uh, so I know, we know nothing of sneeze guards being left uh for teachers to install. Uh, Mr. Chapman, is that something that you can speak to?
Um, to my knowledge, everything was brought to the buildings and installed, and is complete.
That's not the information that I have.
Part of the information, may I speak, are you done?
Yeah.
Um, I just want to speak to the public. Um, and I hope it's okay, it's two of us, one, it's two of us went to every school except two. Um, it's okay if I call your name, the person went with me. Um, President Kara McIntosh and I visit every school. We walked every room, we spoke to every teacher just about. We examined everything, even the COVID room, where if a kid catch COVID, where they're going to be. All the sneeze guys are in place. The rooms are in social distance. They have the proper sanitizing stuff that they need. Uh, the classes that he's talking about, secondary. When we went over there, she explained to us why the older kids would be taking their sneeze guard. And they just foldable, they portable, they foldable, they personal. And that is to make sure that, because they're gonna be changing classes, my understanding. And they take their sneak guard with them through their changes, and at the end of day, they sanitize them, and they, and they put them back. In your pre-K programs, we spoke to the principal, we walked through every room, we went to peers, we went to. Scott, we went just by every school on my own person, the time to sure to, to make sure that we saw what we saw. Email Southwestern, uh, the principal walked with us, they took time with us. The teachers was comfortable, shared what they need, they was excited. There are some things that need to be done, uh, the president addressed those with Ms. Anita Stewart and Mr. Chapman concerning though writer. But in, in regards to following the CDC guideline and practice distance, um, the schools that we saw. At, at the rate that they're done, I would be comfortable with the children going back to school. That was one of the reason that I took the time uh out to do that, was to go through uh President McIntosh and I. To ensure, the teacher wrote down their complaints, are they concerned? Ms. McIntosh have them, those guards are in place. Uh, we have way enough of everything to do what we need to do. Uh, we looked at the cafeteria, how they're gonna be serving them. Uh, they got adequate staff, some people might have to volunteer. But I believe that we on board with this pro, uh, with this project open on the uh fifteenth.
Board President, could I say something?
Yes, Ms. Perry.
Go ahead, Ms. Perry.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. McNeil, were you finished?
No, you can go ahead, um, I don't, I don't talk enough, two minutes long enough, go ahead.
Okay. I, I just wanted to say, at six o'clock this, this evening, I watched the news. And uh, Mr. um, and I'm not gonna say his last name, because I can't remember it. Mr. Bruce from uh MEA, uh, uh, and teach, and they said that they, the teachers are ready for the kids to come in. That questions had been, all the questions had been answered, that uh staff had, and they're waiting for the kids. So, that's the information that Bru, Jordan, Mr. Jordan, Bruce Jordan, that's the information Bruce Jordan gave at six o'clock this afternoon on the ABC twelve news.
Okay, Walker, are you done, Ms. Perry?
I do have one question.
Okay, go ahead.
I just, just in case. Um. For whatever reason. Just in case there is a um, a, a, um. A case that kids send to the school. How many cases are we going to, do we allow? And I guess this is procedural. How many cases do, do we allow to come in, or what, what do we consider an outbreak? And um, could you answer that question, anyone?
Yes, I believe it's two cases, Ms. Tomasi is on, uh, our nurse, Ms. Tomasi, will you unmute and speak to that? I believe it's two cases, uh, what we were told by uh Ms. Tomasi.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, it would be two cases, but um, I would check with the Health Department. I call the Health Department all the time uh regarding uh cases that have been in the district and contact tracing, but I would, I would reach out to the Health Department.
Okay, I appreciate that, and if you, if you get an answer uh before next Wednesday, if you could just drop us an email. And just let the board know the information you received from the uh Health Department, please.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm finished now, Mrs. McIntosh.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Perry, Mr. Walk.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo uh Trustee McNeil's comments about uh her and you, uh, Madam President McIntosh, being able to tour every school. I also had the opportunity to tour every school, I did my last three today. Um, walked through uh the spaces, uh, really get a chance to hear from uh the principals, but also the teachers about their readiness. Um, about, you know, students um coming back into the space, and it seems that the overall theme was that they were ready uh for the kids to come back into the, in, into the schools. I got a chance to see the sneeze guards as well, um, but with that being said, you know, there were some things that came up. Um, as it relates to, again, the overall readiness, readiness, and one of the common themes that I heard, uh, Mr. Jones. Was around this issue of connectivity, as it relates to, you know, the internet that's.
Yeah.
Being able to connect with the, the kids at home. I, I heard so often, um, you know, how, you know, they either freeze, get thrown out of the room, and then have a hard time getting back in. So I know that's still an issue, I know we recently, I believe, in our most uh recent board meeting, approved. recently, I believe in our most, uh, recent board meeting approved for wireless access points to go into the schools and hopefully, you know, that, that comes in. Mr. Jones, the other thing that I constantly heard as a common theme dealt with communication and I'm looking at uh, the slides that you presented us around communications and, and from the point that I heard was communication with faculty about uh, the decisions that are made as it relates to a, a return to a learn program. I had a teacher, you know, pull me aside and say, you know, she heard, uh, you know, via another parent who found out via Facebook about us coming back in school and it made her feel unprofessional. So again, I won't tell you how to do it, but I just know that that's a concern that I heard a lot from faculty in terms of wanting to be um, in the loop, um, as soon as, as soon as, you know, we make a decision. Um, and as soon as we can get them information so that they can feel prepared for what that looks like. The only other thing that I'll mention, Mr. Jones, and we don't have to talk about it now, but I think it's something that we need to revisit is our COVID plan. Um, I had a chance to review it today and I think it's really, really good. However, the triggers or the things that we're using to measure is still built off of the phases that the governor used in her executive orders. And the Supreme Court, you know, struck both orders down and now M D H H S issues epidemic orders, um, as it relates to restrictions. So I think, you know, uh, the document mentioned that it was fluid. So I think if there's an opportunity to kind of revisit that, I, I, I think that would definitely be welcome as it relates to future planning. I'll leave it at that.
Great job.
Thank you. Absolutely. I, I will go to the last slide to, to speak to uh, the communication. Uh, th- these are on deck and ready to go depending on the answer uh, from the roll call vote tonight. Uh, all of these are pending and ready to go. Um, our PR firm is waiting on me to give the go ahead and I will not be giving that go ahead until uh, the vote i- is, is, is completed. But we are ready to speak uh, to our parents and get it out to the public uh, of what we're going to do, whether it is a yay or nay. Uh, both letters are ready to go. Is there anything else, Mr. Walker?
No, I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Right. Uh, Ms. Wright, did you have your hand up?
Yes, um, I just wanted to say that, um, I've visited one school and I've spoken with two uh, staff members from different schools. And I don't ever want to give anybody the impression that if I speak to someone, I've spoken to like a hundred people. But um, the, the only concerns that I've heard are that parents are upset because we keep changing the date for school.
Yes, yes.
So, you know, and a, a lot of the concerns that we hear where we were saying, we, you know, people are calling me and people are this. Um, I think we really need to be cautious about making our decisions based on um, you know, kind of the I heard kind of mentality. I think that we, we need to make our decisions based on what's best for our kids and the parents. And right now, they are ready to go to school and those were the only complaints that I heard from two people from two different schools and these were, um, and both of them happened to be um, the parent engagement people, the ones who are closest in contact with parents. They want to go to school. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, when we make decisions, let's make them with the right people in mind. That's it.
After. Okay, and I'll for last. Um, we did walk some schools, buildings and we did talk to teachers. Um, the teachers are definitely ready to receive the students, that's for sure. Uh, they are concerned, everybody's concerned. I mean, you can't help but be concerned. Um, as far as the delay for school, I hate that we didn't go back one time. I would ask that um, our members who sit in these meetings and make us uh, these promises and these assurances and you see we give the public our word to do your due diligence. Because when it comes back on the board, even though we stand together, united, we realize where our shortcomings are. And as you can see, when we come up short in our district, we all pay the price. I would have liked to have gotten our students back to school in a timely manner. However, um, I just, my conscience would not allow me to give up a go ahead without the sneeze guards because I know how concerned I am as, as an adult and how I forget to touch my face and do things that is not a COVID friendly. And um, and I'm very concerned about it. So I know what kids will do because kids are not as uh, mindful as we are when we have little kids. So I'm glad we waited on the sneeze guards because I think we'll do well and, and, and opening up. But I would like to be able to look any parent or any community member in the face and say, look, we went the extra mile because we are serious about our students' safety. We are concerned about our teachers' health. We want everybody to come to school and not only learn, but go home well. So with that being said, um, I'm glad we finally got our sneeze guards and uh, I think we, um, well, that's something else for another day. Anyway, I'd also like to ask Mr. Uh, Jones. Mr. Jones, I thought we were bringing our young scholars back on Monday and Tuesday and our older scholars back that Thursday and Friday. Did I misunderstand that or did is that not what you said or what, what happened? I think I, I missed a cylinder or something. So, so our fourth through 12th grade will come back the following week. Uh, not, not the third, not the month, not the Thursday, Friday, excuse me. Um, we, we start the first week with only our self-contained classrooms, ECDD. And when I say self-contained, I want to make sure that I say LSS, self-contained classrooms. ECDD and pre-K third grade. Okay.
So, um, is ALA coming back on the 22nd? And Mike, that's what we're hearing. ALA go back on the 22nd?
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Is there any more questions or comments from the board?
Are we going to be uh, testing students for COVID at all?
That has, I, that has not been a conversation for us uh, at the moment.
So, I mean, how are we going to determine numbers of outbreaks? I mean, I don't, I, this just seems crazy to me. I don't understand the rush, the urgency. Um, and I this is not the information or the feedback that I'm getting from the community. And this isn't, this just isn't good science, in my opinion. It's not uh, it's not a matter of who you're talking to or so and so's saying this or that. It's, it's just not good science. This is, I think this is irresponsible. I think it's I, I, I just, I just can't believe that, you know, we're not taking the safety and best interests of the, the kids and the family and the, and the staff into consideration. I just don't think it's the right thing to do. Um, and, and I think it's backed up by the majority of people in the, in the community. I mean, in, including the survey done by this, the, the, the survey done by the school district that indicated that, you know, forty percent were, wanted to go back. And, and I questioned that measurement at the time of the qualitative uh, uh, accuracy of that measurement, whether it was, whether they wanted to go back to school or it was because they needed things that school provided that they wanted. Um, I think we need to first and foremost, keep everybody safe. And I don't think that I still think we're putting the cart before the horse. We haven't provided safe options and alternatives. And I think in-person learning is paramount and important, but not at the expense of even one, one life or one illness. Um, and already it's, it's, you know, we're into the end of the school year. So what's, I mean, what's, what's the rush, you know? Um, and teachers still haven't gotten their vaccines. The sneeze guards, I mean, whatever, are still in district. I mean, it's, it's, it just seems we're playing a very, um, dangerous game with people's lives. And I am not you know, I don't think it's about, you know, just opening up the schools. So I'm really dismayed with the attitude of the district and, and some of the other board members.
Board President?
I will not be voting to reopen the schools because the questions have not been, the questions I asked in the last meeting have not been answered and they haven't been answered adequately. Okay.
Board President? Hello?
Yes, Ms.
You're breaking up. You're breaking up.
Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Okay, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, did you want to?
Yes, I want to call for the question.
The question
In other words, I'm calling for the question and that means for discussion to stop, but I need someone to second it so we can move forward.
Second.
Okay. All right, time for a roll call vote. I'm sorry, Ms. Perry. I was going over, oh, okay. Um, roll, time for a roll call vote to move on. The question's been called for. Uh, Ms. Perry?
But now you're voting on the call for the question.
Which is to open schools, right?
No.
Is the call for question?
When you call for the question, you're sta, you want to stop the discussion. So we have to vote on that first and then we move to the motion, the actual motion.
Okay. Okay, so now we're taking a vote to call for the question to stop discussion then.
Yes.
Is that right, Ms. Perry? Okay, uh, Trustee Perry, is that your vote? Yes?
Yes.
I mean, okay, uh, Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. McNeil?
Yes.
Ms. McIntyre?
No.
And myself, yes. Five yeses, one no. The yes has it. The discussion is closed. Now we'll call for a motion to move the item forward to the agenda. Is that on track?
That's correct. It's already been motioned and second, I need a vote.
Yeah.
Okay, roll call vote. Ms. Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. McIntyre?
So we're voting to go back to school?
Yes, to put, no, we're voting to move it, move the question. Yeah, we're voting to go back to school. Yes, we are because school starts Monday. We're not meeting again. Is that proper, Monica? Or are we voting to move to the next meeting?
Yeah. We have a special board meeting tonight. We have a special board meeting.
So we're moving this to the special board meeting tonight?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't have, I didn't have that understood. I'm sorry. So the motion is to move this item to the special board meeting tonight so that we can return to school, start the safe return to school on Monday. So I'm gonna start at the top with the vote. Ms. Perry, yes.
Yeah.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms., oh, Ms. Laura?
No.
Ms. McNeil?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Five yeses, one no. The yeses have it to move it to the special board meeting tonight. Uh, it's prob, been properly moved a second and discussing is over. And uh, Mo, can you tell me where I'm at? I've, I've gotten, I've gotten lost in the juice. I'm sorry. Am I, what item, item? I don't know where I'm at now.
We are now moving to discussion item twenty-one, or excuse me, twenty-two point one. And um, Ms. Tomasi is present to address the board.
Okay, that's where we, uh, all right, Ms. Tomasi. At this time, I will call, are we on, uh, did we do, we didn't do the academic rap test? Actually, I, uh, let me back it up. Uh, at this time, the board will receive information updates from Ms. Tomasi from the health services.
Good evening, Board President.
Yes. Good evening, Ms. Tomasi.
Good evening. Um, I would like to share some information with you this evening regarding the Michigan Safe School Testing Program. It is a COVID testing program through the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. This is not a requirement for in-person learning. It is just another tool to allow for safe in-person learning. It is a voluntary program offered for pre-K through 12th grade schools to offer weekly testing to educators and staff that are working in person and have daily interaction with students. M D H H S will provide training, guidance, and antigen testing materials to schools that sign up. Presently, we are discussing the personnel needed to implement the program and the interest of staff to participate. This is a rapid antigen test for early detection of COVID cases to help stop disease transmission of asymptomatic people. This is not for symptomatic people. Anyone who has symptoms should not come to school. The test is a nasal swab, not a nasopharyngeal swab, the one that goes up to your sinus cavity.
Oh.
The results are read in fifteen minutes. It's similar to a pregnancy test. It's easy for non-medical people to learn how to do and to read. The test was first offered to sports teams in Michigan to use. There were seven thousand participants in over two hundred schools. Ninety-nine percent of the tests were negative. They found forty-three positive people. Although that doesn't sound like a lot of people, but finding those kids early prevented a lot of others from getting sick. So we will continue to discuss this and see if we have enough interest, um, interested staff to participate and we also need to decide who will do the actual testing. Any questions for me?
Any board members have any questions for Ms. Tomasi?
Yeah, I do. Um, so you said that there that we need to find out interest from, from staff and teachers. Uh, how are we gonna, how are we gonna do that? Is there some way that we can figure out? If this is some?
Yep. We'll probably send out a survey. Um, this is, and this is for staff that have not had the vaccine. So a lot of our staff, um, have and are still receiving the vaccine. This is for people who have chosen not to receive the vaccine.
Do we have something in place for contact tracing?
Yes, we do.
And what's the timeline, do you think, for getting a turnaround for the uh, for the survey and to start implementing this program?
We can get the survey done pretty quick. Um, we still, as a district, have to discuss who exactly will be responsible for doing the testing.
I don't have any further questions.
Um, seeing there are no further questions. Thank you, Ms. Tomasi.
You're welcome.
At this time, I will be stepping in for the academic, uh, committee or I will be called the academic committee to order. I will ask Assistant Superintendent Jones to present the action items to the board.
Sure. I seek your approval to move action item twenty-five point seven, authorization to purchase approved items from amended Title III Part A grant fiscal year twenty-one to the regular board meeting on March seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one for adoption.
So moved.
I think, I think something happened.
Second.
I think we may have lost.
Okay, Ms. McIntosh? Okay, Ms. McIntosh, she's, yeah, she's muted and not on the screen.
Wow.
This year.
Did it get, did it get seconded? Because I, I had muted myself.
I seconded, yes.
Okay.
Okay, it has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I, I do have one question, um, you know, I don't want to get too much into the weeds with this about how a lot of these things are, are chosen and selected, um, among all the options that they have, but it was brought to my attention that Quaver music, that is getting, that is being used for the music program, that there are some cultural considerations, problems with this software, that there's, uh, that it has, um... What would you say? Stereotypes, like an Italian man using spaghetti, um, a misidentification of a Korean woman as Japanese, I, that there's, and I'm wondering if, if, I, I, I am not familiar with Quaver music, but, uh, if anyone's looked into this, I would really hate to have a lot of miseducation happening, you know, inadvertently, uh, in some kind of a, a music program that we're using. I mean, I know that we're trying to do things, we're trying to streamline things and do things online, but I know that often, uh, there's, you know, things are not necessarily as culturally sensitive as we would like them to be, and it would lead to problems down the road.
Is that it, Ms. Laura? Just, okay, are there any more? Is there any further discussion? Seeing, uh, the motion to move Action Item Twenty-five Point Seven to the regular meeting for adoption will be conducted by a roll call vote. As I call your name, please say yes or no to approve. Joyce McNeil?
Yes.
Laura McIntyre? Laura McIntyre?
Uh, no.
Vera Perry?
Yes.
Adrian Walker?
Yes.
Diana Wright?
Yes.
And myself, Carol McIntosh, the motion passes five to one vote. Please continue, Mr. Jones.
Okay. I seek your approval to move Action Item Twenty-five Point Eight, Authorization to Purchase Approved Items from amended Title Four Part A Grant, Fiscal Year Twenty-One, to the regular board meeting on March seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one for adoption.
So moved.
Support.
Kind of get a second.
Second.
Thank you. It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing, uh, the motion to move Action Item Number Twenty-five Point Eight to the regular meeting for adoption will be conducted by a roll call vote. As I call your name, please say yes or no to approve. Joyce McNeil?
Yes.
Laura McIntyre?
No.
Vera Perry?
Yes.
Adrian Walker?
Yes.
Diana Wright?
Yes.
And myself, Carol McIntosh, the, yes, the motion passes five, uh, to one. Please continue, Mr. Jones.
I seek your approval to move Action Item Twenty-five Point Nine, Authorization to Purchase Approved Items from amended School Improvement Grant, SIG, Fiscal Year Twenty-One, to the regular board meeting on March seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one for adoption.
So moved.
It...
Second.
And it has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing, uh, the motion to move Action Item Twenty-five Point Nine to the regular meeting for adoption will be conducted by a roll call vote. As I call your name, please say yes or no to approve this item. Joyce McNeil?
Yes.
Laura McIntyre?
No.
Vera Perry?
Yes.
Adrian Walker?
Yes.
Diana Wright?
Yes.
And myself, uh, Carol McIntosh, yes, uh, the motion passes. Five yes, one no. Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
Okay, um, before we adjourn, do any board members have any comments?
Yeah, I'd, I'd just like to make a, a, a closing comment. I really hope that we won't have anything serious happen. I hope that, that the decisions that we're making are going to be best for the community, um. I, I'm just really wondering what this rush is to get back, whether it's, it's, you know, financially motivated, uh, state motivated. I really feel like we need to listen more to the, to the community, to the parents and to the students. I don't, I, I just don't feel that it's being done. And I, I, I just hope everybody is going to be well and safe. Um, and I also really still have an ins-, uh, an issue with the administrative violence that gets done in these types of meetings through the use of procedure and Robert's Rules of Orders and calling the question and, and things like that, that, that really sort of break down discussion and community and, and the democratic process. I mean, these things are, I think that they're, there's a time and a place for them, um, but they, we have to always be mindful of the fact that they're rooted in colonialism and that, you know, it's, it's perpetuating uh, colonial practice and business as usual, and I really hope that this is a new board that can, can stop the business as usual and really do more for the, the true interests of the community. So, that being said, I wish everybody good night, and we'll see you in the next meeting.
I have a comment.
Yes, Ms. McNeil, go ahead.
I just want to speak to the public and let the public know that each one of us hear you from different angles. I don't think there's one board member on this board wish anything or hope anything bad for you or your children. We are making a decision in the midst of a pandemic. I don't know if I can get it at the gas station. We just don't know. However, we heard your cry. You have a right, if you want your kid to come back to school, and you have a right to leave them at home. And we have a right to try to make things available for both parents and the teacher. There are some teacher have not taken the vaccine, and that's their right. If you seen in the presentation, then we have done everything in our godly power. Only thing left now is to pray, because we don't know the beginning or the end. I looked at those schools. I love my kids. I love my teacher. I got grandkids, got to go into that school. One caught COVID and never went into a school. I'm telling the parents, they're sending your kids. Trust God and trust the guidelines that we have from our scientists and our doctors. We as board members, we're not trying to be evil towards each other. We are learning and growing. I did not come on this board to accuse. I come on this board to work and move forward, and that is my job, to my constituents. I don't get paid for this. I've spent two days, and I walk from ten to three thirty to four o'clock, the president and I, Mr. Walker, Ms. Wright, in those schools, looking, going into the bathroom, checking to make sure they have water, doing everything possible that you can have a little peace of mind because you choose to let your kid go to school. And I would not take that right from you because of my ideology. Because some wants to go, they can stay, those that wants to go can go. I thank Mr. Jones for what he has done. We got a bad start because of the COVID. We still got a lot to go. We just not going to stop right here. I think we are wise enough and brave enough to know, if something happens, we know how to take emergency steps and move forth. But our children wants to go back to school. I want to thank you for voting for me. I appreciate you. I appreciate my board. I'm getting to know my board. I don't know what business as usual was, I know what vision is as today, and we're taking care of business. Have a blessed day.
Um, I would just like to say, I just want you all to know out there that we did take extra measures because we are concerned, because we do worry about the children and our students. So we're doing the best that we can for our students and our community, because if it spreads through our school, then it spreads through our community. So we are working diligently, and we are not stopping with just sneeze guards. We have other things that we would like to implement, but due to COVID, everything is moving slower than we like it to move. Everything is not in our control like we would like it to be, and no, we don't have all the answers, but we are working to get the answers and the answers that we have. We are implementing them in our process to provide a better education for you in the midst of a pandemic. So that is all I have to say. Um, now, we have another meeting after this. Is that right, Mo?
Yes.
Okay, and we have those links and all that already, or is it the link that you already sent us? Do we go back into that?
Nope, we're staying right here. You're gonna pull your script for the special board meeting.
And just keep right on rolling.
That's right.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, this concludes our meeting, this meeting, or maybe not, because, okay, so do I close this meeting out then? I guess it's my question, if I'm just, just gonna stay right here?
No, close it out, because this is a cow. You gotta go into your special board meeting now.
Right, but I'm just not, go ahead, Ms. Wright.
I just want to say thank you, Ms. McNeil.
I'm sorry, Ms. Wright.
I just want to thank Mrs. McNeil for her comment.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Um, for our public, our next regular board meeting will be held on Wednesday, March seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one, at six thirty PM. Please don't leave just yet. We have a special meeting starting immediately after this meeting. Seeing no further action, I declare the board committee of the whole meeting adjourned. The time is eight twenty-two. All right, let me get my special script. Okay, let me see, Mrs. No, not that again. Okay, here we go. Except this kind of, I don't know.
President, we can hear you.
Okay, and I also have another Zoom link, so why do, why I, why do I have a Zoom? I tried to turn it off.
Just disregard that, that was from earlier.
Okay, hold on. What is this? Is this it? On March seventeenth PM? No. Mo, we got five thousand things. Okay, um, I'd like to start the special board meeting. The day is March tenth, the time is eight twenty-three, and I am still looking for my script.
Take a roll call.
Yes, just a second. At this time, I'd like to take a roll call. As I call your name, please respond by saying present. Uh, Ms. Perry?
Yes. I mean, present, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Ms. Wright?
Present.
Ms. McNeil?
Present.
Ms. McIntyre?
Present.
Mr. Walker?
Present.
And myself, Carol McIntosh. At this time, I would like to turn the floor over to Mr. Jones, I would think.
No, unfortunately, you have to allow the public to speak.
Oh, do, wait a minute. Hold on, hold on here, we ain't gonna do this tonight. Wait a minute.
Okay.
At this time, the board will hear comments from the public. The public is reminded that they may raise their hand to speak or submit comments in the chat section also. Anyone who sent an email prior to today's meeting will have that read. Members of the public are recommended that the Board of Education by its bylaws thirteen seventy are not obligated to answer questions, make statements, or comments in response to issues raised by the public in general. Such issues will be referred to the Superintendent for Investigative Study or Recommendation. At this time, I will ask Stephen if anyone has their hand raised or submitted a comment or email. Uh, Stephen, Stephen, will you have them, uh, state their name? And will you unmute them so they can make their statements, please?
Hello again, board. Um, as I'm sure you can imagine, there is quite a few comments, uh, and questions, so I'm gonna do my best to sort through these here.
Okay.
So while we start, I'll start first with the raised hands, uh, while I sort through the written questions, and I'll start with Casey Purdy. Uh, see here. All right, Casey, you are unmuted, and feel free to begin when you are ready. Please state your name and address, uh, at the beginning of your comment. Casey, are you there? I show you is unmuted. Okay, I will come back to Casey. Let's see if we can get that resolved. If not, I believe it did also write comments as well. Um, next here, I have, uh, Melanie Hemphill. She believe you. All right, one second here. All right, Melanie, you have been unmuted. Feel free to unmute yourself.
Um, hello, good evening. Um, I just wanted to say pertaining to the earlier conversation as it pertains to the, um, sneeze guards that at Pierce, oh, my name is Melanie Hemphill, let me know if I was burning. At Pierce, um, we receive sneeze guards, but the ones that were given to the teachers were not comparable to the ones that were given to teachers, um, at other buildings. So the sneeze guard is the size of a student's desk. It really offers no, no coverage at all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else? Mr. Stephen?
Yes, ma'am. Um, let's see here. Uh, next, I believe we have, let me sort through here, now, there's a few that would prefer to have them read. Okay. Uh, next we will go to, I believe, Keyshawn Wade would like to speak again. Uh, Mr. Wade, I will unmute you now. You may begin when you are ready.
I just that I'll McIntyre that you want making the right and
I apologize for interrupting you. Uh, you are coming in quite muffled.
Can you hear me better?
Yes, that's better.
Um, I find it deplorable that Laura McIntyre was silenced after correctly and correctly stating that you guys are making the wrong decisions. I think the community is not being listened to and what you are deciding is going against science. I mean, I most of you know, I think or no, we are tested two times a week. We aren't allowed outside contact with anybody who isn't tested two times a week. And we also do not have in-person classes. And this is at university level. Where there a university with a big eight billion dollar endowment, and they are choosing put students in danger. And you are choosing to put children in danger. You are choosing to allow people the option to send their kids into danger. That, that isn't a right. You, you don't have the right to endanger, to endanger children. It's not it's not a matter of we do everything that we can to make it safe. You can't make it safe because what we what you places is not safe. The safety is objective here. This, this plan is set forth isn't safe. You don't even have testing for students. There is only testing for staff members. And that, that is not even a guarantee yet. It's a question of if we will have testing for staff members. This is, is mind blowing and it's idiotic. Like this board by its bylaws duty is to educate. And what you are doing is clearly disrupting that. And I don't understand what it will take to see that. Really actually take, what will you do once you are responsible for the death of somebody? The death of a child? What will you do if a child goes home with COVID from one of his classmates or one of their classmates and kills somebody else? And dangerous life of somebody else? That is not a possibility that you should take. That shouldn't be a possibility at all. It shouldn't be option, this should not be an option at all, period.
Thank you. Any other, uh, comments, Stephen?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, let's, uh, come back to, I believe it was Casey Purdy we were having some issues with. All right, Casey, go ahead and unmute yourself and I'll send you a request here. Let's try it this way. All right, you're unmuted. Are you there? It seems like we're still having some issues with Casey. So I will move to Victoria Bigelow. Uh, Victoria, I've unmuted you, feel free to unmute yourself. And you may get, begin when you are ready.
Okay, um, hi, I'm Dr. Bigelow. I'm the, I serve as the arts coordinator for the district. It's an in-kind position I've been in for six or seven years. I wanted to, uh, ask, um, about the comment about the Quaver curriculum that the music staff voted to adopt. And it's a, uh, it's based on the National Core Arts Standards and, um, for music. And it's used nationally. And it's, uh, quite affordable for a district, for our district. And, um, so I'm just wondering, I heard that there was some sort of comment that this, there was inappropriate content. And I'd like an opportunity to respond to that or to have the vendor respond to that where it's rejected. Outright, because I think it's a wonderful product, very comprehensive.
Please do.
Yes, I, I, uh, Ms. McIntyre, are you the person who made the, who, who, who put that forth? Could you explain, please?
Point of order, we can't have back and forth like this, that's the bylaws.
Okay.
I thought she was saying she was going to have somebody explain something that was familiar with the tool. I didn't realize she was asking board member to speak.
Okay. Well, I, I would just like to ask that, uh, I, I'd like a, I guess it'll be at the minutes, whatever was said. I didn't hear it. And I, it was, uh, one of the teachers let me know that, you know, they were quite upset. Um, so I just wonder, um, if that could be reviewed again, if I could, if that could be revisited.
It can, board member McIntyre's email, I do believe is on the website.
Okay.
If you can email her and you and her can have some dialogue concerning that, um, piece, if you don't mind.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am. Is there any more comments, Stephen, or anybody else out there?
Yes, ma'am, and I'd like to apologize to Dr. Bigelow. She did ask me to read the comment for her, but, uh, trying to sort through a bunch here, I apologize.
Okay.
Next, uh, hand raised, here is a Debbie Ronaldo Hopkins. Uh, Debbie, you are unmuted and you may begin. Uh, sorry, unmute yourself and you may begin when you are ready. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Can you hear me, sir? Okay, so the first thing I want to clear up with Mr. Chapman. Um, the sneeze guards, I received mine today. They were not there yesterday and they were not placed on my, um, on my student's desk. They were left in a pile on a table. I'm not the only teacher that this has experienced. They were just left there for me to install and put on myself. No direction, no, um, advice in how they would best manage for the students at all. So I want to know that I'm one of several teachers that that happened too. The second thing is, um, there's been no, I've heard of, of air purifiers. Yet we were told we were gonna have air purifiers in our classroom. And, um, we not had, heard any information about that. And then, um, earlier, Mr. Walker spoke of the connectivity issues. So we're having severe connectivity issues across the district. And now when children come back with, um, computers and use them in the room, what do we do then? So when will that, um, problem be fixed and looked at? Because, um, kids are being dropped off Zoom, um, all day long. I mean, like seven to eight times in the morning, five, six times in the afternoon. We're losing kids left and right because of our internet issues. And it's been a real problem. And parents aren't calling the board, they're not calling downtown, they're calling us teachers and asking why they keep getting kicked off of Zoom, what the connectivity issue is. So when kids come back with computers in the classroom, how are they gonna stay connected? And so I want to make sure that's very, very clear. And the last comment, um, I know Ms. Wright brought up that there was a lot of conversation with, that she spoke with two parent engagement officers. We have excellent parent engagement officers in this district. However, the teachers are the one that are speaking with parents every single day, every single day of every day of the week. So the teachers and the staff members, the support staff are the ones speaking with these parents every day to find out what their feelings are about coming back, their, their excitement about coming back, as well as their fears. So I want you that that's be included every single day because it's part of our job to connect with those parents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody else out there?
Yes, ma'am, that, I believe that is it for, oh, sorry, uh, oh, it's gone now, okay. So, um, okay, I believe that's it for the raised hands. So I'm gonna go alphabetically now on the typed comments. Um, starting here with, um, Beth and Oliver. Their comment is, there is, they're in my classroom along with sanitizing wipes and hand sanitizer. Uh, next, we have a comment from Bruce Jordan. It states, Edept scenarios, did all stakeholders have an opportunity for input on the Edept? I know UTF didn't. Next comment here from Casey Purdy. I apologize, we're having some connection issues with them, so I'll read out their comment. Uh, it starts with, I am concerned about the technology in the buildings. Last week I had to teach in a closet, so how will this work if the students come to school? I am also concerned about the cleaning, my bathroom in my room has not been cleaned since last week. My room was just vacuumed for the first time yesterday since January. We still have not received any disinfecting spray. I have had to buy my own. We have not had our rooms deep cleaned like we were promised. I want the kids to come back to school, but in order to be safe, we need these supplies. I am very upset that we cannot voice our concerns. I have had a parent lie on the questionnaire that said she was negative and she was positive, so how are we going to deal with that? Let's see.
Mr. Jones, are you jotting some of these concerns now, maybe? So we can maybe address them?
Also for, and Mr. Jones, I also save, um, the entire chat log will be saved and I will send it to Mrs. Ellison. And she can get that, a copy to you, uh, tomorrow.
And Mr. Jones, you and Mr. Jones, you can forward those to Ms. Anita. Mr. Jones is sitting in for Ms. Superintendent Stewart tonight. So these are actually Superintendent Stewart's, um, issues to carry. But Mr. Jones, we're hoping that you can refer them to her. So she'll have the opportunity to dress, to address them.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, so that was it, I believe, for now for Casey Purdy. Again, I apologize, Casey, for the issues. Um, the next comment is from Shandra Forward. Uh, comment reads, I am concerned about teachers with underlying conditions. Do we have data on how many teachers have been vaccinated? This could be stronger. This could be stronger than the sneeze guards. Also, I am not clear in how cases are shared with staff and parents. Does this information get shared with those who may have been exposed? Or are we waiting for more than one person to report a COVID positive result? Oh, and I apologize, she did comment later that, uh, Ms. Tomasi answered her questions. Okay, the next comment is from Donna Milliken. Uh, and it reads, is the best idea to bring, is it the best idea to bring kids back to face-to-face for only one or two weeks prior to break? Maybe we should wait until after break. Um, and then next comment is from Felicia Nymark. Staff members at DTM have the parents of students who have been dropped, disenrolled, been notified by centralized enrollment or attended staff that their child or children have been disenrolled and that they will need to be re-enrolled prior to being allowed to come to school. If not, when will they be?
In what school did they say that was at? I'm sorry, Stephen.
Um, staff member at DTM.
Okay.
Okay, um, okay, that's sorry, um. Next question is from, apologize for mispronouncing, but, uh, Kiana Brown. The question is, what is considered in school outbreak? I heard two, but is that two in one week or two in a day? Next comment from Raphael McDaniels reads, teachers installed their own sneeze guards? Um, next comment is from Siri Miller. And it reads, has anyone on this board tried to reach out to parents? And how we feel about children returning to school? I'm part of the public and I believe it's time for the children to return to schools. Uh, next comment. Oh, I'm sorry, I believe that's it. Do one more, one more check, I apologize. Uh, okay, we did get, I did get a follow-up about the DTM, uh, from Felicia Nymark. Her comment reads, it's a district-wide problem, not just TTM. Um, and then the last comment is from Jacqueline Kildee. Their comment reads, we do not get adult desk-sized sneeze guards for teachers. And then I do believe I have new hand raised Carmelita Lane. Carmelita, I have unmuted you, feel free to unmute yourself and begin when you are ready. Looks like we're having some technical difficulties again. Okay, it seems like we're having some more issues. Uh, Carmelita would ask if you would, please type out your comment. I'll make sure that gets sent to the board. Um, and then I did have another two comments come through the text. This latest one is from Monica Sebastian Katie. And the comment reads, is there adequate custodial staffing to maintain clean buildings across the district? He, there's one more from Joanna Costelman. And it reads, I am a Flint Community Schools scholar parent and a Flint Community Schools teacher, and I cannot stress enough about how bad the internet is at the schools without the additional devices that the students would be using. Teachers are getting kicked off the internet several times in a short thirty-minute class period. Okay, uh, seems um, I apologize, I believe that is it. Okay, I think that is it for now. I advise anyone, if we couldn't get through, please do not stop sending your comments in the comment section and I will forward them to board. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. At this time, I will call upon, uh, Assistant Superintendent Jones to present, uh, item number thirty-one seventeen. At this time, I will call upon, uh, Assistant Superintendent Jones to present, uh, item number 2117 to the board.
I seek a motion and a second to approve action item 21.17 authorization to return to school.
So moved.
Second. It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yep.
Thing?
Yeah, I'm just going to go on record saying I think this is the most ill-advised decision the school is, board has, has made or is about to make, uh, in a, well, a strong, ill-advised decisions, in my opinion. So I really strongly urge the rest of the board to, to really consider the gravity of what they're about to do. I just, it just seems like there's just callous indifference. I, I don't know. I don't know how else to explain it, but I'm strongly, uh, I want to express in, in the strongest possible terms that I think this is very ill-advised and I'm, I'm very against it. And I will not be supporting the endangerment, endangerment of children and students and scholars and teachers and staff. Going back in the midst of a global pandemic that is mutating as we speak. This is just, this is insanity to me. I'm done.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any further comments or discussion? Seeing the motion to move, the motion, the motion has been made and properly seconded. As I call your name, I'll be taking a roll call vote. Please respond, yes, to approve or no to approve the motion. Joyce McNeil?
Yes.
Dr. Joyce, okay, um, Laura McIntyre?
No.
Vera Perry?
Yes.
Adrian Walker?
Yes.
Diana Byatt?
Yes.
Myself, Carol McIntosh, yes. The motion passes five to one. Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Jones. Uh, do any board members have any questions or comments before we close out?
Yeah, yes, I have a comment. I have a comment.
And then I do too.
That's right.
Yes, um, you know, uh, as, as a board member, um, I, I know that there are times that, um, we will disagree. But I would like for us to be mindful that, um, we can disagree respectfully. And I, I am just sort of, and I hate to use the word, uh, fed up, but that's sort of how I feel because there are so many adjectives used, um, in reference to other board members' difference of opinion by uh, one of our board members and, um, I, I just don't think that's fair to the rest of us because I can respectfully disagree with everyone without using words to sort of define or characterize you. So I just want to say that I hope that in future board meetings that that will stop because we can say we disagree without vilifying another board member's difference in opinion. So that's my comment.
Point taken. Thank you, Ms. Wright. Is there any further comments?
Yeah, I have to, um, I'm just kind of baffled at the response, but that's okay. It's, like I said, I, I choose my words very carefully and, um.
You know, if you choose your words carefully, then knock it off.
All right, all right, all right. All right, order.
I have the floor. And thank you. Um, I find it interesting that the, there's cherry-picking of Robert's rules when it's convenient and, uh, it gets broken when it's, it kind of gets in the way, which is kind of what I'm saying about administrative violence, um, uh, that goes back to the days of colonialism. So it's very interesting to me and I am very, very educated and pick my words very, very carefully and, um, I stand by what I say. And, and disagreement doesn't necessarily mean disrespect. And if disrespect is, if someone is going to take something personally that has more of a reflection on that person than it does on what I'm saying, if, if you recognize what I'm saying and, and take it personally, that's, that's on you. Um, but I stand by what I say. I think that I just want my statements to stand for those who can't speak, who won't speak, who are afraid to speak. And there's a lot of people out there and this culture of intimidation and administrative violence has got to stop, has got to stop. And people need to be able to speak truth to power. And that's, that's precisely what I'm doing. And it, it's not that it's disrespectful, it's just, it just what it is. Um, and I will not be intimidated or bullied by the cherry-picking of, you know, administrative rules when it suits one person or, or the other. I think that, um, that the disrespect is actually coming from the other end. I haven't, I haven't called anybody any names, so, um, and I've, I've stuck to the business at hand, so that's, that's what I'd just like to say. And, and history will let us know what the, what the right and wrong decisions are. We'll see.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. Ms. Wright, are you done?
Yeah, um, the comment that I was making and, and, um, you know, and I guess for me, I don't have an issue with anyone disagreeing with me, not at all. But I do not want someone saying that because I believe our students have the right to be back in school, that I have callous disregard for the students, the families or anyone. Cause that, that's sort of putting something on me that does not belong. And, um, you know, and I, and you know, I, I have, you know, been pretty silent when, you know, people have, well, I shouldn't say people, a person has been sort of just kind of digging and picking and digging and picking with little, little, little comments like that. And, um, as I said, I, I'm very respectful to anyone. I haven't called anybody any names either, but I have been, um, the victim of a lot of these little digs that, you know, it's like, I'm an educated person. Well, great, you know? I, I'm not trying to attack anyone's level of education, but if I make a point, I'm making that point to be helpful, not to put someone on the defense. So, you know, it, it's how it's received that's the problem more than what is being said. It's, it's how it's being received. So, you know, if you have a problem with anybody's opinion other than your own, you're not going to receive anything very well. But there are seven opinions on this board, seven, not one, seven. And I don't think it's fair that any one person should constantly berate the rest of us because we don't agree with their one opinion. We all have a right to our opinion. We all have constituents that we are trying to represent. And I think that we all should respect one another's right to do that. And I'm not, and, and I'm not going to be bullied by anyone either.
Nobody's bullying anybody.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just responding to the point.
Right.
Miss, miss, I, I'm speaking, Ms. McIntosh.
Point of, point of order. We're not supposed to
Everybody out of order, everybody out of order.
Mrs. McIntosh, I'm the one being interrupted here.
Well, you are, but I got to cool it out before you can continue, Ms. Wright. Only one of us can speak out of time. Okay, Ms. Wright, oh, your turn then. I was trying to shed it out so you can have the lane all to yourself, Ms. Wright.
But my point is that respect is a two-way street. To get it, you have to give it. Opinions, you know that old saying, opinions are just like the you-know-whats. Everybody's got one. So just, we just need to respect one another. And that's all I'm asking because I don't, I don't get on here taking time away from whatever it is I could be doing to sit here and have somebody constantly trying to, um, insult you all during the meeting. And that happens, you know, that happens just constantly. And I think it's time for it to stop. We're all adults, we're all educated and we need to behave as such. And I think that those who think that they're so smart that they can insult people and they don't get it, they need to stop it. They just need to stop it. And, and that's the end of my point. And to, to, uh, and I want to just get on with the vote and let's move on.
Thank you, thank you. I, no, no, the meeting is adjourned. We're done voting. We've already voted.
We did. Oh, yeah, that's right. Good. Cause you know, all right, good. So everybody have a good night.
McIntosh, could I say something?
Uh-oh, ah, shucks, all right. See there, Ms. Vera?
No, Ms. McIntosh, could I say something?
Absolutely, ma'am. Yes, you can.
I am so excited that Flint is going back to school. Everybody is in school but our babies. And I'm tired of hearing the media say, we just don't know when Flint's going back, where, 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 where. And you're not hearing those, um, well, I have not heard the, a bad, any bad comments from the other school districts and stuff. So I am so glad our babies can go back because our babies want to be back. You know, so congratulations to Flint for, let's go, let, let's get, get our kids back in. That's it.
All right, come on, Mr. Walker, get yours in.
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll be quick. Um, the only other thing that I wanted to mention as it relates to things going back in person is I think at the next board meeting, I would like to hear about our plan as a board in terms of returning to in-person meetings. I believe under the last orders, those provisions have been made to allow us to come together. Um, but we'd love to have more conversation about that, uh, maybe at our next meeting so we can inform the public about our plans. I'm just thinking about, I know technology has been challenging. Um, but specifically, I'm thinking also about like the challenges that we've experienced during the public comments section. And some people just not being able to get in because of some of the challenges. So, uh, excited, uh, to learn more about what our plan would be, uh, for us to return in person.
Awesome. Is anything else, Ms. McNeil? All right.
I'm just looking forward for us to return back and hopefully that those items that we have discussed about the internet connection. And I know Mr. Jones had spoken on that and hopefully we can get that addressed. Um, Flint didn't get like this overnight, but we are over commerce. And we know how to man up and lady up and be kind to one another and be respectful. I have never been so insulted in a public meeting about my integrity and about the decision for me making for my constituent. Um, I'd just like to be respected for the people that I speak for and everybody. And that's why we have seven board members. And we need to stop discondemning. Uh, I did the best that I knew how to do for people that I listened to. Um, nothing is perfect. You know, the teacher guards, we know if we got, uh, found a place that make teacher guards, they're not large enough. We have a place to make them. Ms. McIntosh and I have investigated that. Uh, we got a place that, uh, can, you know, get what we need. But we got to get started somewhere. And I don't believe in my heart, not one child is going to die because of this decision we've made. I don't believe that. I don't confess that. I don't wish that upon nobody, that your child is going to die if you send them to school. So I don't believe that. I think we're going to have a healthy environment, the best that we know how. We go everywhere else in this pandemic. Keep in mind, your kids have to wear their mask with their sneeze guard when they come back to school. They must have the mask on with the sneeze guard. Parents, keep that in mind. We have plenty of masks at the school, but your kid will be walking around with a mask with the sneeze guard. I just want to reinforce that. Thank you. And I'm gone for tonight.
And I'd just like to say before we wrap up and after I make this comment, I'd like to adjourn. I'll be the last board member to speak because everyone's had the opportunity. I'd just like to say, um, I would, I would like for us to leave these meetings. And I know it's wishful thinking, unscathed. Everybody has a right to their opinion. We were all sent here to represent somebody. Everybody's opinion will not always be the same. Let's not take it personal. We have to work together. We have to do it for our district. It won't be easy. There'll be some heavy lifting, some arguments, some painful situations, but I'm trusting that we're mature enough to work through it. Okay, we're here together. We're the ones who have been decided upon to do this and we have to find a way. So after we get upset with one another and get our attitudes and say the things that we want to say, maybe that we shouldn't say. Let's let it roll off our back. Let's try and move forward. Let's make intelligent decisions and let's keep in mind when we finish representing for the community, our main customer is the students at all times, the student, their parent and the teachers. That is where our hardest decisions lie. And those are the people that I expect us to make our decisions for first and foremost. So with that being said, I'd like to say good night, have a blessed evening and this meeting is adjourned at nine oh six PM. Thank you. Good night.